All right, I would like to call to order the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting at five fifteen P M. Ms. Marsan, please take the role.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Fairgreave is absent tonight. She is out of the country with her daughter. Mr. Kouchert?
Here.
Mr. Lentz?
Here.
Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
And Mr. McNally and Mr. Lackner are both absent at the moment, but I believe will be arriving shortly.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee, specific individuals who serve as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
So moved.
A second.
Ms. Marsan will take the role.
Mr. Kouchert?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Yes, motion to close session passes. The board is adjourning to closed session at five seventeen P M.
Yes.
Okay. We are, we are back in open session. It is Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five at six P. M. Ms. Marsan, will you take the role, please?
Yes, Mrs. Bell?
Here.
And just to confirm, Mrs. Fairgreave is out of the country. She is absent today. She's visiting her daughter. Mr. Koushert?
Here.
Mr. Lentz?
Here.
Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
And Mr. Lackner should be here momentarily. He's absent right now, but he's coming soon.
Uh, we're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lentz. Uh, board tonight, I have five items on the superintendent agenda. One being the cellphone procedure. That will be a little bit more lengthy than the others. Uh, but right now I want to start with, over the past week, our district has faced an unimaginable loss with the passing of Jordan Laskowski, one of the Redling Middle School eighth grade students. By all accounts, Jordan was an outstanding young man who loved, who was loved by his family, friends, and he absolutely loves sports. I would just ask all of us to take a silent moment of reflection, now in honor of Jordan and his family. Thank you. The grief that follows such a tragedy is deep and wide-ranging, affecting not only our students and staff at Redling, but also many across the entire district. In the face of this heartbreak, our staff and groups outside of our district step forward. Staff at Redling and across our district came together with compassion, strength, and an unwavering support. Our staff provided direct support to students, comforted colleagues, filled in where it was necessary, or simply checked in with kind words or gestures. Their presence made a significant difference. Losing a student is one of the hardest experiences school community can face. And yet, our staff's professionalism and care help create space for healing, comfort, connections during an immense time of grief. On behalf of the district, we send all of our condolences to the Laskowski family, friends, and community members. We appreciate everybody for showing up for one another, and thank you for placing students and their colleagues at the center of your hearts. Next, we have a returning student registration opens next week. Uh, April twenty first, be live on our website. Uh, we will be sending out, uh, postcards to each of our families, making sure that they are aware of this. Um, all of the student registration process, uh, will be on the website electronic. So please make sure that we're filling out all of that necessary information. Thank you. Tonight, we get to recognize, uh, St. Charles East Science teacher and department chair, Matt Bowman. I would ask Principal Richter to come up with Matt and talk to us a little bit about the outstanding, uh, performance of Matt.
Sure. Thank you so much for having us here. Thanks for the invite. Um, I'm shocked.
Me and, whoa, there.
There we go.
All right. Um, so the application process was extremely rigorous, and it took a lot of hours, but it was really reflective. So any teachers out there that are in the STEM field, I can't recommend it enough. Win, lose, doesn't matter. I learned a lot about my students, and they really shone through all the entire process. Like, the only reason why I got this is because of the kids I had in class. Like, they were amazing. They made this happen, and it was an awesome process. So again, I'm super shocked, I'm surprised, and just super humbled to be here. So thank you.
Matt, thank you so much. All of us who know you are not surprised, uh, because of your dedication uh, to the craft of education and what you bring to it each and every day. Very impressive. Thank you so much for serving and leading, uh, within D three oh three. Congratulations, Dr. Justin Adaway for successfully defending his dissertation a few weeks ago. He loves this. He is so excited that I'm doing this. Uh, he is earning his doctorate from the University of Illinois. Congratulations, Dr. Adaway. A number of guests with us. Then I'm going to first start by asking for some introductions. This is around our cellphone procedure that the team has been working on for many, many, many months. So let me start over here. Uh, Michael Vaughn, you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll go around the table. And your roles.
Good evening. I'm Michael Vaughn. I'm Director of Communications and Community Relations for D three oh three.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Adam, President of the St. Charles Education Association.
Hi, Yvette Stahl, I'm the interim Executive Director of Learning and Teaching.
Hi, I'm Drew Glassford. I'm a parent of a grad, twenty twenty graduate of St. Charles North, who proudly graduating UW Madison this year. And, uh, I'm also a community member living in Campden Hills. I'm the former CEO Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Suburbs with fifteen sites, serving two thousand kids. And before that, the director with the National Boy Scouts of America. Glad to be here.
Uh, Nicole Osborne, Dean of Students at St. Charles East.
Hi, I am Becca Laporta. I am the Assistant Principal of Student Life at North.
Hi, I'm Katie Hurrung. I am an English teacher at St. Charles North.
Hi, I'm Ellen Jehoda. I am a senior at St. Charles East.
Hi, I'm Ariab Bate. I am a student at St. Charles North.
I'm Cara Drexler. I'm an English teacher at St. Charles East.
Good evening. I'm Audra Christensen, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education.
All right. So, Dr. Christensen, you have the clicker, so we will kind of progress through. We will start with our Together Building Pathways to Excellence and our core values of belonging, perseverance, and achievement. Um, this initiative lives in all three of those values, as you will see and hear from our panel tonight. Strategic priorities of effective collaboration and structural coherence in a culture of dignity. You'll see those highlighted areas in which it really brings, uh, these pieces alive, from purposeful family and community engagement to evidence-based and structural practices, honoring the dignity of each student, staff, and family, equitable policy programs and practices, and effective caring and culturally responsive staff. So tonight, represented here, um, we're going to have a conversation about the process that we engaged in, uh, to develop the cellphone procedure. The board itself has a policy. So this, again, this is not a policy, this is a procedure. How do we enact the work that we need to be doing on a day-to-day basis? Where did it start? It started with a call of action to our community in a letter, uh, that we submitted to the Daily Herald outlining some of the issues that we're facing, D three oh three, but issues across the nation, uh, with this topic of cellphones and the impact it has within our classrooms.
And, and from there, the, um, the process started by listening to the community, listening about a tough, challenging project, problem. Obviously, uh, listening is a key part of, of collaboration and, uh, being responsive to what you're hearing, especially when the issue is, is tough and complex as this is, and was very impressed in joining the district that, uh, an issue that's been talked a lot about across the country and, and lots of districts was something that not only, uh, district leadership and the community wanted to take on, but to wanted to take on it collaboratively in a way that was listening and responsive to, uh, all of the feedback across the community, as, as is represented here, concerns from staff, students talking about the fact that cellphones were starting to be a distraction in classrooms, parents feeling like that was not, was taking away from some of the experience in our classroom for our students, and then figuring out a way to work together to try and solve a difficult problem, to listen to what the community was saying, to give thoughtful, uh, process, uh, develop a thoughtful process for collaboration, and then come together and start discussion.
We had our charge statement that we put out to the community, our staff, and our students, and it really was everything that, uh, Mike was talking about. How do we, how do we put together a group of people to really think through the cellphone procedure within our, our district?
And I joined, uh, D three oh three, I think, on the second, uh, I think my second day was the second meeting of the cellphone advisory group. And I was a little bit skeptical when I heard that there were seventy people coming together to discuss a topic, you know, in a course of, I think, ninety minutes was an hour and a half for the, uh, meetings, and was just really impressed by how thoughtfully Dr. Christensen organized the meetings to get, uh, voices, particularly student voices elevated, to have really lively, in-depth discussions in small groups, and then coming back together and sharing out, uh, to the larger group what the issues discussed were. And so it was just a very, uh, I, I thought, very effective way of, again, bringing a large group of people together across all different parts of the community and having really thoughtful, uh, productive conversations that did not get bogged down in, in, in minutia and figured out, and again, with Dr. Christensen's leadership, getting us moving ahead and, and doing it in a, in a very, fairly efficient way, considering, uh, the, the difficulty of the, the issue and the number of people in the room and, and the voices involved.
So with that, I want to open it up to the panel to talk about your experiences. Um, we have students, we have staff, we have administration, we have community members here representing that group of seventy people who came together for a number of months. This is an opportunity to talk about your experience, wherever we're at. Um, I'm not going to call on people, just, uh, let's just, Drew, let's...
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I'd like to speak, uh, to my participation from two perspectives. First, as a youth development professional, for the last twenty years, I've been very active on a, on the national scale, uh, with several organizations based in Washington, D.C., around STEM career pathways and outcomes, and successful outcomes for kids. My focus was on mostly under-resourced children with Boys and Girls Club and with the Boy Scouts. Um, I was invited twice this year to speak at the White House with the Department of Education's You Belong in STEM Initiative. Uh, I've been involved in many, 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 many facilitated discussions. And I shared this with Dr. Gordon and his team, but I was struck at the level of organization, the objectivity of this, um, how it was structured. In fact, there's aspects of it I've stolen already from my group and my work, I have to say. Uh, but I can just say it was an, I believe, from my perspective of what I've been involved with on a national, statewide, and local level, it was exceptionally executed. Um, and the, the, the thoughtfulness that was put into the organization and presentation of materials, the time we were given. Um, secondly, though, I want to speak to my community, because doing a lot of work on the national level, I have a, aside from my son being involved at the high school, I did not have a lot of engagement with my community. But I can tell you, I'm really proud of our community for this, because it's a highly charged emotional issue for a lot of folks. But I can also tell you on, on, when you think about a child's future, their emotional well-being is, is a critical decider on who decides they can be successful and who thinks they can't. Because it all comes down to what a child believes they can do ultimately, whether it's an intervention of a mentor, a teacher, um, or a parent, right? So anything that inhibits that, that emotional success and that emotional pathway for them, it's a huge obstacle for many kids. So that's why this was really important to me, not only because I've seen it with my own son, but I've seen it with thousands of others, and it's certainly very topical at the national level. So I'm, I'm so grateful for the leadership and courage of the district to take this on. I'm so grateful for how respectful the process was for the diverse amount of opinions that were there. And I went in there full with one opinion, and I have to tell you, the process changed my perspective as I listened to my neighbors, and I listened to fellow parents, and I listened to staff members. So I just, uh, can tell you from my perspective and my experience, it was an exceptional, uh, experience. And I believe the outcome reflects it as well. So thank you for that work and your team.
Um, oh, okay. So, uh, I want to start off by saying I agree with everything. Um, I'm really sorry, I forgot your name.
Drew, it's Drew.
Drew said, yeah, we were at a table together too, so I, I feel bad. I agree with everything he said, and, um, one thing is just like, uh, kind of to piggyback off of that, the thought process that went into this. I mean, there were a lot of poster boards with, like, different ideas written on. There were a lot of surveys that were sent out, like this, like, it was not something that was just come up with overnight. Like, it took us a while, and there was a lot of thought behind it, which I really appreciated, because it is such a polarizing issue. And what he said about the change of opinions, like, I went into it with one opinion, and then it changed, I think, five times throughout the course. Like, it was, it was very interesting, like, he said, listening to everyone. And I also just got to meet so many people throughout the committee, which is really nice, like, people I would not have otherwise known throughout the community, and teachers and other parents. And I just had a really great time, and I thought it was a lot of fun. So, yeah, and it was, it was a great experience, and I'm very happy with how everything turned out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to add that one of the things that we did as part of this advisory group was read, um, The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. And reading that book, um, in addition to all the conversations that we had, was really illuminating for me about how an environment inundated with cellphones is really counterproductive to all of our district vision, like, goals. Um, we know as teachers that it gets in the way of achievement, because it distracts students, um, and it's, you know, hard to, to maintain focus. Um, but it's also a balm when things get difficult, which gets in the way of that perseverance piece. Um, and it's also, it also gets in the way of belonging, because even though much of their socialization does happen online, it is really hard to make connections when everybody's face is in their phone. Um, so reading The Anxious Generation and seeing all of that research and, like, data-supported reasoning that getting rid of phones is going to help students in all these ways was really affirming and made me really, like, excited and passionate about the work we were doing.
Hi, um, I completely agree with everything that was already said, but I also just wanted to say that it was really a pleasure to be on this committee, because similar to Ellen, I had, um, a pretty strong opinion to come into it. But as we started talking over and over again about the anxious generation and just different things in the meetings, it kind of helped to shift my opinion and just give a better example of what life could be like without cellphones, especially in classrooms where cellphones aren't really particularly something we want.
I'd like to add, when we talk about our commitment, Together Building Pathways to Excellence, this came about, uh, quite a long time ago, about a year ago now, with a, a problem. You know, we are battling, competing with cellphones, not only the impact on attention and focus and learning, but the impact on social emotional regulation during the school day. It could have been as easy as the superintendent saying, well, I'll just write something up and, and do this. But instead, leaning in to that commitment, leaning into the reality that we are better together, it was an incredible opportunity for our students, for their grown-ups, for staff and D three oh three community members to really come together and engage in a truly collaborative experience that I think will set a pathway for this district that is going to make a huge difference in the lives of so many of our young people. And it was an extraordinary experience.
Can I just add one quick thing? Um, as being a participant and doing a lot of listening at these, um, each meeting, I want to say that as a board member, and I don't speak for the board, I'm speaking for just myself, but remembering back to what we, what I wanted to see as more communication and making sure that the community had a pathway to communicate directly with administrators or the board or staff or each other or parents, this was an ideal setting, and I so appreciated watching it all take place, and it was nothing short of absolutely magical. It... It, like Drew and Ellen both said, a lot of people changed their minds and I was on that continuum myself and it was spectacular and I can't thank you all enough for participating.
I'll also add in that, you know, this has been a problem for over a decade now and the fact that we chose to tackle this, and we've had many conversations about how from a community perspective, the community doesn't like being told no or what, you know, having some mandate handed down. And for us to collaborate and have many different perspectives in here, and you've already heard people change their minds, potentially multiple times during the process, this approach and this engagement with the community is so powerful. I hope we continue this as we continue to move forward and come up with these problems that we have to solve. So I want to thank you and I want to thank everybody for, I mean, your wonderful participation in this. Like some of the discussions were really awesome, just getting some of the feedback. It was like, oh, we didn't think about that. We had everybody from people who were locking down, you know, different sites and everything else on their home routers to people like, you can do that? So I mean, it was, it was really great.
So I'm going to add, red and green cups now have more of a meaning than anything else. Dr. Christensen knows how to run a good, strong, facilitated...
She does.
I think the thing the community should know is that we had student voice and it was well done. And you should be very proud of the children, they're not children anymore, but the students that are coming out of our homes and our communities. So thank you again for, it was fun to sit and listen and to learn and I'm looking forward to the rest of the presentation.
All right, so... So... It's a slow, it's a slow sell. There we go. So as you can see, the committee came together a number of times, really having different conversations across multiple topic areas. But as was described here, really thoughtful, really engaging conversations, engaging people of different perspectives on these topics. And then we really leaned into a lot of the research. What does that mean? What does that look like? And the pieces that we were able to pull out continued to be a really important aspect of that. But I'm going to ask Yvette to speak a little bit about what we learned through the research.
Sure, absolutely. Anytime we endeavor to change something that sits in front of students, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence, not just to the latest and greatest of what's out there, but also how does it affect the learning brain of the student? A lot of this work happens to dovetail really nicely with some of the professional learning that our educators are doing together right now around concepts like attention and multitasking and generally what's the process of the brain engaged in while we as educators are trying to engage it in learning. The really exciting part of this sort of working alongside that learning by the teachers is some of this terminology is becoming quite common in our adult conversation. So a few things that were explored and will continue to be explored. To be fair, if we have to compete with our children and adolescents as we educate with cell phones, that's not a fair fight. And that's not an opinion, that's just how the child and adolescent brain works. It wants to know what's in it for them and sometimes we can't compete with what cell phones can give quickly back to a student. And part of that is there is a natural within neuroscience fight for attention. So we say things like, perhaps you're not paying attention. The reality is it's not possible for the brain to not pay attention. It's just what is it paying attention to? So the currency that our educators are working with in the classroom is a constant back and forth to gain that attention in a way that siphons learning right through that funnel of where we want them to be. One of those barriers is the incredibly engaging distraction of some of our technology and cell phones that could be available. While they may have benefits during the academic setting, during instruction, it becomes almost impossible. And part of that is because that concept of multitasking you may have heard is a myth. What it looks like within neuroscience is an explanation that there's literally a concept called gating that occurs within the brain. And some of the educators are nodding, I see, they remember this talk. Where really the best you can hope from, from an individual is trying to do multiple things at once, is that they happen to be really fluent and able to do that quickly. But it's not that they're doing those two things at once, they're just able to gate or switch back and forth quite quickly. So when we introduce something like the cellphone into society and it enters into our classrooms, we have to know that we're asking very underdeveloped brains, brains that are not ready to make these decisions, to go ahead and make that switch to gate, to multitask, to manage not just the high levels of rigorous learning we're asking them for, but also perhaps manage this distraction, which has sort of harnessed what's in it for me. And there was much research that was curated that you can see through this link, the good work that the committee did. There is also additional research that our educators are digging really deeply into about how do we harness the best use of technology? How do we also make sure that we're talking to students? Not just about, gosh, those cell phones can be really distracting when you're trying to learn, but instead, what's really going on with your brain in that moment? Why is it that we're asking you to do that? Why is it we're asking you to set that aside? And that's become probably the most important conversation amongst some of the staff as we think about the policy or the practice, yeah.
Thank you so much. So we engaged on surveys. Mr. Vaughn will kind of talk us through, what did we learn when we reached out to our community?
Yep, so when the advisory group was done, pretty much coming up with the proposed procedures, we did what we call a thought exchange survey. It was an open-ended survey, pretty much just asked, did we miss anything? Is there anything that needs clarification? And then you can participate in a thought exchange survey through two ways. You can give feedback, you can provide your thoughts, and then you can rate the thoughts that other participants shared in response to the procedures. And so we had a very strong response, over 2,400 community members responded. It was sent to all D three oh three parents, all staff, all high school students. It was in January, it was open for a little over a week, and we got, again, a very strong response. And in talking to the thought exchange people and getting their feedback on how our participation and the thoroughness of the feedback compared to some of the other thought exchange surveys that are out there, they consider, so there's a thought and then the other, again, all the other participants can rate it. And so a thought, an average rating on a survey, a survey that gets an average thought per, rating per thought of 15 is considered high engagement. Ours was 25. And so not only were we getting a strong response to the survey, but it was clear that the participants were spending a great deal of time thinking about responding to looking at what other community members said and sharing their thoughts on that. And then the key themes obviously are summarized there, just very strong sentiment backing the fact that the community was taking this on and coming up with procedures for limiting, restricting the use of cell phones and personal devices in classes. And then very, very strong messaging around consistency, that one of the toughest parts of this, and I think we all understand that, is making sure that it's implemented well. And one of the keys to implementing it well is making sure that it's consistently implemented, consistently enforced, and that there's strong support across the community and including education for and support for parents and how they can back us up at home with what's being done at school.
Let me beautifully into implementation committee. So different voices on this conversation. One of those pieces was around a caddy or backpack, because we kind of started to navigate that. It was one of the conversations toward the end of our large 70-member team where we came to this point in the conversation where we said, you know what, we're going to hand this over to the implementation committee. So I'd love for those on the implementation committee, and this is really our high school team who stepped into this, to really talk this piece through and then reaching out to our staff, to engage them in what do they want. As Mike said, and what we heard around consistency from our survey is that, at the end of the day, I could have done a stroke of the pen and made this procedure happen. It would have been super easy, would have fallen, and it would have failed fairly quickly. But what we know is that we need to engage our educators on this piece. How do we implement it? So team, talk a little bit about this implementation team and committee.
So as many people have mentioned, it was clear from all the conversations and the data that something needed to be done, that teachers wanted to do something, students wanted to do something, and the community wanted something done about cell phones in the classroom. And knowing that we all want what's best for students and that the data shows that a phone-free environment is that, the question became, how can we have a policy that is simple and clear and consistent enough to be effectively upheld? For me as a teacher, I was thinking about if we're adding to the mental load of teaching, it has to work. It has to yield a positive outcome for everybody. So in order to figure out how that would work best, we surveyed teachers, whether they preferred a caddy-only option or a caddy or backpack off and away option. And like the data says on the screen, overwhelmingly, people chose a caddy-only policy. So that's what we're all going to be implementing next year.
I also really appreciate that we didn't just make the policy and then say, okay, go, go do it. I think a lot of teachers have wanted and felt the need for helping students pay attention, helping students disconnect from the things that sometimes aren't healthy on their phones for the time while they're together in class. But there was some concern that like, well, we don't want to get into a conflict that isn't going to be supported all the way up above us, right? That our, the support from the deans and the principals and the, you know, administration above that. So I really appreciate that, like going into this, we're having very thoughtful conversations about what is that going to look like in the day in, the day out? How are we going to be supported in making sure that we can make this work?
I would also say from a student's perspective, as much as like a backpack sounds appealing because you can easily just look at your phone secretly without the teacher even seeing, it does disrupt learning, especially because you're kind of just like instinctively wanting to look down at your backpack and see what that is. And that kind of disrupts your learning, like, mental state because usually you're focused on one thing and then that's it during class. But if you're constantly looking at your phone, seeing your notifications, you have to constantly start over like repetitively. So having your phone in a caddy is overall just a lot better in general because you're not going to know whose phone's vibrating and you can't really check it either way. But having it in a backpack opens up that. So I'm really glad that we were able to decide on what we did and I think that'll be really helpful moving forward.
One of the most exciting things going from the community large group to the implementation committee was seeing that all of the feedback that we discussed and the insight that we gained from the community committee and then actually doing something with it. So then we get to the implementation group and we start to look at what is the common language that we can have across all levels, elementary, middle and high? And how can we take all of that feedback, consider multiple voices, put it into writing? And then what is it actually going to look like, feel like and sound like in our classrooms and our schools? And so some of the discussion that we focused on the most in our committee was the consistency and the response for our staff, learning from each other on what are the students going to need in order for the expectations to be clear and explicit? And then what do the staff need in order to uphold those expectations from the beginning of the year all the way through the end of the year? And then also, we talked a lot about in this implementation committee, how can we problem-solve with our staff on the next steps moving forward so that we can start talking about this now and communicating now so that everyone feels comfortable and prepared going into the next school year?
So as we prepare for that on Friday, we will go through the School Improvement Day to discuss those details. We intend to discuss this right after the Culture of Dignity piece. So really pairing that element of learning and use something about cell phones that sometimes feels a little bit disciplinary as more of a positive experience. Learning is the priority here. So how can we use that structure as a way to learn? Not so much that it's a separate element. So we've had a lot of discussions, a lot of collaboration with all of these teams. You've heard that a lot, there were a lot of voices involved in that. And it also brings us back to some of the things Yvette has mentioned with brain science and how powerful that is and how we think about cell phones and how we think about learning and how those two things can be one.
So let's get into the procedure itself. What you heard, the why, you heard it beautifully from all of them. Next slide. So we look at the elementary. Elementary is no access to your cell phones, may bring them, must be kept away and off all day. This is nothing new at the elementary level. It is that consistency that we're implementing across the board. Communication protocol, one of the bigger issues that we face are our parents reaching out to students. There is a, there is a very traditional pathway to that, that is through our main office. That is the best way for our families to be able to communicate needs to the school is through the front office. And those are very typical protocols that have been placed, in place for many years. At the middle school level, restricted use, but not too dissimilar from the elementary. Cell phones and earbuds may be brought to school but must be silenced and stored in their lockers the entire day. Before school and after school is their access point for those. And again, the communication protocol is the same, going through the main office to connect with students or if there's an emergency or any of those aspects. Where it becomes nuanced is at the high school. High school is at a limited, they are away, cell phones in earbuds are away during instructional periods. These are silenced and in the phone caddies. Cell phones will not be accessed when students are in PE. Students cannot bring their cell phones when leaving class to use the restroom. Usage is permitted outside of the school hours such as extracurricular activities, non-instructional times such as passing periods, study halls and lunch. So there is where we're absolutely transitioning from the elementary, middle school to the high school where we are saying there are, is some access to the cellphone. But again, the why behind this work is we care so much for our students' learning and we value our educators and the work that they do every day. It's why we're doing this. This is not about a punishment, it is about the why of learning and why we're there is to ensure that our students are highly engaged each and every day. And as Jen said, that we give our teachers that opportunity to truly deeply engage with our students so they're not competing with a cellphone, TikTok, Instagram, text messages or whatever it may be within the research. Very clear that students can be interrupted up to 100 times during a school day by notifications from their phone. That is almost impossible for a teacher to win that battle on a day-to-day basis. So when we talk about, because this has been a big piece, what are those interventions? What are those consequences for this work? I'm going to hand it over to our deans, to Dr. Christensen, to talk a little bit high level about what, about what that is. I said deans, you are not deans, I apologize. So Becca, do you want to kick us off? And Nicole, you want to go from there?
Sure. So in the policy and procedure, it lists out a non-exhaustive list of potential interventions and consequences that we can utilize any staff member from the classroom up to tier two, tier three deans and administration. tier-three deans and administration. And the ultimate goal of our intervention actions, and this is what we're going to really work with our staff on in our upcoming trainings, is how can we respond to the behavior in the classroom so that it is not exclusionary but restorative? Because ultimately, the goal of changing behavior, whether it's in the classroom or out, is to get to the root cause or the function of the choice, and then identify the best consequences that can change the behavior moving forward. So, although there are going to be, you know, standard practices that we might use and work with our teachers on implementing in their classrooms, when it gets to the point, which is the concern that we talk a lot about in our implementation teams, is when it is a pattern of behavior, what do we do? Because ultimately, we've talked a lot about how we want to limit the distraction and provide best first instruction in the learning environment, and we all know and can acknowledge that that happens without the device. So, how can we pair with the student, pair with the family, staff included, and talk about limiting the distraction and using restorative consequences to help the student learn about the behavior choice? And then ultimately, get to a point where we're setting up the environment so that they can have the most, the best learning experience possible. So, like Nicole mentioned earlier, our plan as an administrative team is to work with our staff in our upcoming institute days and teacher workdays to really pair with them on, let's go through the scenarios of what you're going to experience in the classroom. What are you nervous about? Let's talk about it, and let's problem-solve. Add tools to your toolbox so that, given the situation, you feel equipped, prepared, and confident to respond with those individual situations, while we still feel comfortable with a standard practice of consequences that we can use to deter and diminish cellphone use in the classroom.
So, just as Becca mentioned, as we start to think about this, we're also thinking about a timeline, because it's imperative that we make this intervention something that is consistent across the board, but also something that provides additional supports. Because the first time out isn't necessarily going to be the easiest. So, Friday isn't the end game of this project. We want to respect the work. We want to respect the fact that, well, we might need to revisit some experiences coming into the year. So, April, obviously, we're introducing the policy and the procedure, the hows, the whats, the whys. But as we proceed throughout the rest of the year, we do intend to communicate with students and families. To reiterate the point, this is coming, this is forthcoming. And then, as we go into June and July, the teams have started to talk about what are additional activities. Some of the feedback that we're going to get from Friday is going to be part of that collaborative experience. And then, we're going to take that into early August with further training, supportive scenarios, as Becca mentioned, and then further communication as needed. And then, we intend to follow up. What are we missing? What is preventing us from continuing on? But making sure we have a follow-up loop so that we know that we're supporting people in those positions. The other thing that we're thinking about in regards to communication is specifically for students and then specifically for families. At present, we do have a video that the School Improvement Group will look at as part of a dialogue. We also intend to put out something to the families for the purposes of their work. Other things for students in regards to August, we are going to continue to implement that first three days really, this is a process, this is part of your structure. As we think about good learning and we think about what are those first days going to look like, we want to make sure that that first best instruction element is there with the structure. As you come in, this is what we're going to do. Here's your caddy. Here we go. And then, we're going to get on with the learning. And again, it's a positive experience. I want you to learn with us. Other things to think about building those relationships, having that opportunity to have that dialogue maybe in the hallway if it's a struggle, like, we're not trying to make it about a struggle. We're trying to make it about the learning. As we proceed with the families, we're also going to continue to put out newsletters, further communication, and then, again, dialogue from student life, announcements, behavior expectations. Deans usually do kind of a class meeting day in those first couple of days before we kind of get started. We will reiterate some of the expectations and routines in that as well.
Thank you. So, one of the pieces that we'll be doing are success indicators. But for us to really set those, we're going to be sending out a survey to our students, our staff, and our families. These are some draft success indicators. We want to see a decrease in distractions. We want to see a measurable improvement in student engagement. We want to see staff and students' consistent complacency within the procedure. We want to make sure that our stakeholders, our staff, our students, and our families, regarding the effectiveness and clarity of our cellphone procedure. And we want to see a decrease in cellphone-related discipline referrals over the year. But we will be sending out some surveying to really engage our students, our staff, and our families before we set any of the data metrics going forward. With that, I know the board potentially has a few questions for our members, so I'm going to turn it over to the board members.
I wondered a couple of things. First of all, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work and coming up. As I sat here, I thought, well, why don't you just tell them to put it away? And then, I'm sorry, I looked out in the audience. And grownups have a hard time putting the cellphone away. So, it is a bigger, more complicated issue than what we initially thought. And I appreciate very much that D-303 is making its decision rather than it's coming from legislation or from some mandate that we don't have any control over. I did want to ask, and this is a touchy question, because there is the concern if there's an incident or a crisis, and how do I get to my student? How do I know my student? And I learned a lot sitting in that conversation, so maybe somebody could speak to that.
Perhaps, go for it. My life.
Okay. So, this actually was one of my big concerns as well. Like, as a student, school shootings are my worst fear. I have had numerous nightmares about it, like, and that was why I was pretty pro-keep-the-phones. Like, when I was going into it, I was like, I think we should be able to have our phones with, because of strictly school shootings. But then, we had a detective who I cannot remember the name of, but she was cool. She came in and talked to us about it, and actually, having, like, phones with us could make that situation a lot worse, even though that seems counterintuitive, because, like, what if, like, if you have, like, all the kids trying to contact their parents that could, like, tie up the lines and prevent the people from who actually need to be getting at the school for that incident to prevent them from being there? It could also allow misinformation to spread extremely quickly. And also, like, while there was a lot of discussion about the goodbye texts, and that was a tough one to, like, you know, hear of parents at the end of the day, having the phones and not having the phones could really make a difference in the amount of people, lives who are lost. And I know it's not fun to think about that, and it's very difficult, but that, having the detective come in and speak about it, really was very eye-opening, and it made me personally believe that if there was an incident, God forbid, which, again, the odds of that are very low, but we still have to consider it, that not having the phones would be the safer alternative for everyone involved, as backwards as that may seem. And we have been, like, especially with the new Alice training, we have been under a lot of more training on what would happen for an incident like this, and we've done a lot more practicing, and I think we're all, as a district, a lot more prepared if that were to happen, too. And in none of that training did we even really talk about phones that much, and, like, communicating with parents has always been like, what can you use as a weapon? And where's our rendezvous point, which is, like, for East St. John Newman's Church, if, you know, you need to evacuate? And yeah, that's my opinion on that.
Out of the mouths of the students. I want to be very clear. That was one of our students who answered that question. Other feedback to board members' question on that? Please, Drew.
This is the parent hat, right? Because being a parent is really hard, very, very hard, very stressful. And I believe, you know, statistically, I looked into the statistics because we knew we'd have this conversation. Your child has a much greater chance of being struck by lightning than being in a school shooting, right? When you think of the reality of the fear versus the risk of the access, you know? And that's what, that's, to me, where I was struggling with the right decision on this, because you have to believe that there's so much damage that's being done to our kids, emotional damage, emotional risk. I guess "risk" is probably the better word, because the debate on damage, of course, exists, but the risk is definitely there. But I think the piece that we overlook is the comfort to the parent, knowing that the access is available. And that, and so, when you think about the stress level of our community and the stress level of the parents and the fellow parents that I had dialogues with, because I came in very clearly with an opinion, thinking, you know, this is really something we need to completely remove, based on what my experience and research and involvement has been around the emotional impact of cellphones on our kids. But hearing that and really empathizing with that and understanding that for a parent to know just in case, because of the stress level that's in our communities, over this crisis that we're having with gun violence in schools, even though it hasn't yet fully, you know, hasn't impacted us entirely, I think that's a piece we have to be cognizant of, because it's very real. But what got there for me was knowing that, you know, the impact, the risk, it wasn't, it's not worth a risk for me, because the risk, to me, is greater, the emotional damage and lack of learning and particularly, lack of engagement, because let's face it, massive engagement crisis in education right now, by comparison to what we've experienced in the last 20 years. So, that, to me, the engagement piece, the learning, the real purpose of school, that's what overcame it for me.
Mr. Koushert, I think you were...
Well, I think Mr. Glassford said it a lot more eloquently than I was... Dr. Gordon and several other administrators and I have had this discussion over the last, now, couple of years regarding how we would potentially implement such a plan. And so, kudos to this group, because it is quite an undertaking to bring all the voices to the table, not only student voice, which you represented your peers very well this evening, but teacher voice, administrative voice, and then certainly those within the community. So, kudos for such an undertaking. You know, one of the things I would add to the success indicators that we have discussed at length as well is, you know, a lot of the research out there is pointing to the immediate or close-to-immediate results that we could potentially see with learning outcomes as well for our students. And at the end of the day, that's why all of us are sitting in this room right now, is because we care so much about those learning outcomes for students. And one of the things that we had initially said is if we could kind of snap our fingers and immediately increase student outcomes, wouldn't we do that? And although the undertaking was certainly not the snap of a finger, just the collective work of the group to do something that is kind of a monumental shift in our mindsets of what is appropriate, and my knee-jerk reaction is to check my cellphone right now. What was that? And so, I'm just very excited to see how this makes an immediate impact for our students. And one of the other things that I found to be comforting from some of the research articles that I was looking into and the implementation plans is it was almost easier for the students to adopt it than they had originally thought, right? Because they don't have that fear of missing out. They don't have the student next to them checking their cellphone, checking their Instagram at the same exact time. They're all kind of collectively in the same world, so to speak, right? So, they don't have to worry about missing the big post that their friends are seeing. And so, I think, I'm just very encouraged by this, because I think this is a really critical initiative for our student outcomes. And as co-chair of learning and teaching, you know, we're always trying to think about ways that we can make an immediate impact. So, again, kudos to the group, to those who participated in the survey, 2,400, I think you said, responses is tremendous. And so, to get the collective voice of everybody involved is super encouraging. So, job well done, and thank you.
Could you, Dr. Gordon, could you maybe talk a little bit about, I know it said, cellphones, smart devices, and AirPods? Could you give just kind of a picture of what are all the possibilities that we, and of course, there's the allowable exception, so it's not just a blanket? But then, also, one sidebar comment is that being out in at various events with other school boards, members from other districts, or other administrators that I happen to know, they're all looking at us, and they're all saying, how did you do that? So, it's really great to be a part of something where people, even our aspirational districts, have gotten phone calls saying, wow, can you tell me how you did this? They said, yes, sure, call Dr. Gordon. So, because, you know, I mean, it's something that we are finally doing, that other peers that we aspire to are looking at, which is so great to be on that end of it. But can you also talk about the other part?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, at the end of the day, it really, we started having this conversation around smart devices, but where we continued to coalesce around were the cellphones in the classrooms. That's where it was game-changing. That's where it continues to make this big difference in engagement. And that's where we really spent the majority of our time. The earbuds, yes, as well. That's a secondary piece to what we're seeing within our classrooms, but it all goes back to the engagement. Everything that's taken away from those opportunities to engage, we want to give our educators and our students the best possible chance at success. What I believe about this procedure is so important, we're stacking a lot of bricks in our pathway to excellence. This is another one of those bricks we're stacking in that pathway. This alone will not have the blue skies, bird singings, and all greatness is going to occur, but I believe that you continue to stack really good procedures and practices and structures in place that allow the system to thrive. This is one of those pieces that I believe will help, will absolutely help within our classrooms. Key to it is that we collectively wrap arms around each other. And that was the why behind this, coming from our teachers to say exactly what Kara said earlier, that a teacher can do this, and that has occurred. But as an organization, for us to be able to step forward and say, as a superintendent, as students, as assistant principals, as deans, as classroom teachers, we're willing to wrap our arms around each other to say, this is what we're going to do. Because we also know the consistency factor on this is huge. This is one of those areas where it is a slippery slope, as you're, as we have, to be very cautious of saying, yeah, you can do this in this classroom, but don't tell anybody. That's not an environment we want to create, because we're not the first district to do this, but I believe we're going to be doing it exceptionally well. But I've already heard stories from other districts who've implemented, and who are already regressing, because we didn't lock arms. And again, I'm going to go back to, from a stroke of a pen, we can make these decisions, but this type of effort together collectively moves the organization further down the road. It took close to a year to get us to this point in time to do this work. And it was all of that. When I talk to other school districts, other administrators, I talk about the time and the patience to do this and do it well, and truly try to engage people into that conversation. Board, any other questions for our amazing panelists?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, when we took a couple of notes, I noted that 6% increase in attentiveness and retention. Is there any other investment we could make at really $0 and get that kind of an increase? So, we talk about money all the time. We're spending money, and if we're going to spend money, we should make sure we're spending it well and do everything we can to make sure we're preserving those. I've, from 36 years of teaching, I've always, as soon as cellphones were introduced, I said, there's nothing that I can do, as we talk about trying to be an entertaining teacher, and there's nothing I can do that they're not going to be able to find something more entertaining somewhere else in the world, and they have access to it. So, I could be the greatest comedian in the world, and they're going to find more entertainment at the tip of their fingers. As far as teachers, I've had policies similar to this in my own classroom, and I've had teachers who, the way I've put it is, those are teachers who are buying peace and sending the bill to somebody else to the next teacher by saying, you can do it in my classroom, but not in the next. Two questions I have. There are other distracting access we're going to have. You know, certainly, they have their laptop with access to the web, and I know we have a lot of things locked down. But I also know that students find ways around those things, and what I'm concerned about is an increase in those pathways around. So, I'm hoping we're going to do things to help lock things down more that way. And then, just one quick question on the high school... Um, and then just one quick, quick question on the high school procedure. We have, unless prohibited by specific classroom, uh, or school rules regarding the, the exceptions, uh, you know, the usage being permitted, um, I'm also hoping that teachers who have those classroom procedures where they are going to maybe be a little tighter or in these, that they're going to be supported, um, in, in implementing those procedures in their classroom.
Throughout time, students have always figured out ways of getting around rules. I, not, not anybody at this table, I'm sure, uh, but other people have gotten around rules. We will continue to face that. We will. Here's the really amazing thing about D303. We have really amazing students who, for the most part, step up to our expectations. Where students struggle is when we're inconsistent. That's us. That's not our students. It's why this is so critical that we're consistently applying it. Our students are looking for reliability on this. They're not looking for somebody to be their best teacher and their best buddy. They want to know from class period to class period to class period that this is what we do. That's where we're going to be better at. Will there be students who, who figure out ways around it? There will be. We will figure that out too. We have amazing educators, amazing assistant principals, amazing leaders who will figure out how do we adapt, because we've always had to adapt, because they are. They're, they're, they're innovating very quickly around us, uh, but we, we have thought about that and we recognize that as well. Other?
Um, I just wanted to say for all the other ways to like get into playing games or other things like being addressed, um, I would say that there are a lot of students that do, but honestly, you guys have done a good job of blocking everything, because it's very difficult to find a game that you can actually play now. Being able to find anything is really difficult now.
I love that.
Thank you for your total honesty. That's awesome. Not that I expect anything less, but I really appreciate it, and it's really meaningful, I think, to the people who are listening at home, so thank you so much.
Also, in regards to, um, the comment about like the unless during non-instructional period things, like I think the main example I can think of that one is, um, cardio day and PE. Um, I'm not a huge fan, but I understand its importance, but doing that without, um, a cellphone sucks, because, uh, I don't know about other people, but I can't talk and run at the same time on the treadmill. It's just not going to happen. My lungs can't handle that. So, that's like, I think, really the only, like, I think that's what that like sort of clause, I guess you could say, not like this is a constitution or anything, but I can't think of a better word. For that is sort of for scenarios like that, where like, again, cardio day and PE, it's, it's, it's really bad if you don't have a cellphone, I'm not going to lie. Or just like, I think another discussion was like, what if you're having like work time and you want to listen to music? That one's a bit iffy, but I think that's sort of what that like byline is, is for. Yeah.
Thank you, our students. Board members? I just want to thank all of you for giving your time tonight and coming out and speaking to the board. Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your commitment over these past number of months. Have a great night.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Dr. Gordon. As everybody moves on, we'll move on to, um, item 4B, and, but let's just give it another 10 seconds or 20 seconds. Board, that brings us to item 4B, the board member reports on committee meetings. Let's start with LNT.
Good evening. I'm reporting on our March 17th, um, LNT meeting, and again, I would encourage people to go to the YouTube channel and take a look at, um, the discussion that we did have. We had a few items, um, some will be on consent. One of the items we looked at was, uh, the overview for the high school experience. Dr. Christensen and her team came and gave us a skeleton look at what they are proposing to be looking at, and that, um, wanted to get board feedback, so that happened during that conversation. They will be coming at our next LNT meeting, which is April 21st, with a full presentation on the high school experience. On consent tonight, there is curriculum renewal that, um, we agreed, uh, in terms of, uh, resources, particularly for the increase in AP and dual, um, courses. Uh, we've seen a huge increase with the number of students who are taking those courses, and therefore, we also need to increase the resources. We had two trips that, um, we will be voting on tonight. One is with the music department at the high school, and another is a trip to Puerto Rico with, is in June of next year. We also are going to be voting tonight on the calendar, um, 28, 29. And so that is also on our agenda tonight. One of the questions that had come up was about, uh, the graduation location and that 20, I think I got this right, the 20, year 29th, May of 29 is our last year at NIU, so I assume there'll be more coming, um, to have that discussion later in our, our board work. So, that, uh, we again are, have LNT next, uh, next Monday, and it will be about the high school, uh, experience.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe. That brings us to business services. Mr. Lentz.
For our last meeting, uh, was on the 20th of March. Um, we had a very, uh, a very good presentation on the access program, a complete review of it. Um, not, not quite our full AROI, but the, the, the team endeavored to, to give that. No updates in either Mid Valley or no areas of concern in either Mid Valley or D303 financial reports. Um, we got an athletic trainer recommendation, that's going to be on consent. So our, uh, athletic directors had expressed some concerns about availability, um, so the, the administration went out to a, address those. We have, uh, also on here a number of construction things, um, some modifications at Redling, Coron parking lot, Wosco, partial roof replacement, um, additional site security items. We also have our custodial contract renewal, um, and east, uh, east high school door replacement and our, um, our natural gas RFQ is going out as well, um, from the 20th. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz. That brings us to DPTO. Mrs. Bell.
Okay, we met on, mm, March 19th at the St. Charles library, and, um, it was actually great. There's a lot of energy in that group, and it's always enjoyable, a lot of collaboration. Um, one of the big discussions was an idea that, um, will probably be talked about, um, I would assume at the board table at some point, uh, about something that the community liaison at Lee Smith is looking to do, uh, some sort of community-wide fun run during the Scarecrow Fest. This is nothing that's set in stone yet at all, but it was a district-wide idea, um, as a grouping for PTOs to maybe do to support, um, some funds for like student breakfasts or, um, uh, lots of different ideas that she has, and it, she was meeting with various D, um, PTO reps to just sort of ask for interest, and it's a really spectacular idea, and she's got lots of energy and it's, we'll see. I think it'd be great. So that would be during Scarecrow Fest weekend, but that's, it's all very preliminary discussion at this point, so nothing is completely set at this point, but that was the big topic that we talked about. On the next meeting is April 16th, Wednesday.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. That, um, brings us to item five on the agenda, citizen comments. Uh, we do have beginning of the meeting, citizens' comments. Uh, Mr. Kushter, would you read our preamble?
Sure thing. Welcome, everyone. During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and the community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility towards others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special and committee meetings are live streamed and are available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. Personal information should be considered before making a statement that will be recorded and made public. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district and on behalf of our students, staff, families and community members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kushter. Our first speaker is Jen Flowers.
Hi, my name is Jen Flowers, and I'm proud to be the second and third grade access teacher at Anderson Elementary School. Our nine boys call me Mrs. Flowers. I stand before you today to speak about something truly important and close to my heart, the access program at Anderson. This program isn't just a service or a placement, it's a community. It's a place where students feel seen, valued and included. Choosing to move access for the 25, 26 school year means choosing to take away their sense of belonging, relationships they've made, and the great amount of success each child has made. As my good friend said, "When we know better, we do better." And we do know better. We know that purposeful inclusion doesn't happen by accident. It takes commitment, time and the right environment. Our students thrive because of the relationships they build and the support they receive. They're participating in tier one phonics with minimal support. A student who once needed extra support in specials is now one of the top performers. Students are earning blue sips, blue slips daily for their positive expected behaviors, and currently, we have 50% of our students participating in general education classrooms for academics and social emotional learning. We even have students in band and orchestra for the first time, and they're thriving. And this year, we have a student who's graduating from the program. We are so incredibly proud of you. None of this happens by chance. It happens because of dedication, family engagement, specialized staff and a school culture that truly believes in every child. That doesn't happen by accident, it happens because we choose it. So I'll say it again, when we know better, we do better. And as we like to say on the access team, moving to Coron is all done.
Thank you for your comments. Colleen Bagger.
Hi, um, my name is Colleen Bagger, and I live in St. Charles. Um, I'm a parent, an advocate, a community member and an educator. Um, my husband and Mike and I have, have brought our children here before, because this has been an ongoing pattern for the last three years, and I know the word burden has come up of conversation, and, you know, I was thinking about it, and this really has been a big burden on our family the last two and a half, three years. It's had a big weight on us, um, in, in so many ways. And so I wanted to bring the kids, and Mike really brought a realization to me, saying, "No, we can't bring the kids, they're so confused, it throws off their entire evening, they don't understand why they're here." And he was right. So I think that's my focus tonight, um, my confusion, because they're confused and I'm confused too. And one of the students talked about student voice, and the students we're talking about can't come up here and give their voice, so we'll try, I'll try to a little bit. So I, I'm really confused about the administrative recommendation to go with option three and move to Coron. This has been going on, this is the third time that we, we were moved to Anderson the last like two days of school. Then last year, again, it was brought up moving from Anderson, and again, it's brought up moving from Anderson. It's very, very, very confusing. So we were brought in and shown three options. We're talking about 28% of the access program, kids that next year would be four schools in four years. So we went through all these options, okay, and we spoke to the administrators, and then to, to see today that that recommendation is, from our administration, is very confusing to me. I'm, I'm confused about the comments, um, that are, that are written in the recommendation saying that Anderson went well. Anderson did not go well last year. It didn't, okay? That's a wonderful team, a wonderful leader. It took so much hard work. My son had seven IEP meetings and two functional behavior assessments. Those, that whole staff had to work so hard, they were not ready. That's not an easy transition. It has gone very well this year, because it takes time. So I'm confused how this also aligns with their IEP, a movement to Coron aligns with their IEP. How does that align with their IEP? Every kid we're talking about has autism considerations. Changing your transition, their routine, that's one of the number one considerations. How does moving them four different times align with their IEP? And most of all, I'm confused about our strategic plan. I'm confused about how we're using words like dignity. That means worthy of respect. We're talking about a marginalized group here, talking about belonging. How can any kid belong moving that much, much less a student who has autism? And then perseverance. We talk about perseverance with kids, okay? This is a big disruption of learning. My, my kids had enough. So I just beg you to take this opportunity to send a message, okay, to our community that you care. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Bagger.
It's a hard act to follow, for sure. I said it last time and I'll say it again, I just wish that we had as thorough, I mean, that was amazing, that's like a wow moment, to have all those individuals involved at all levels, to study a group of students. Wouldn't that be something? I talked to Colleen, you know, if we had that level of support and understanding. Uh, there was a word that was used in the report that said there was some urgency. Absolutely, there was urgency. This was a rush. These are, you're going to have to forgive the perception, but they seem like they were extra kids and collateral damage for a mistake you made by listening to an administrator who's no longer here. Our kids are collateral damaged for that mistake. It was a rush. This, this is very urgent. This is two pages put together compared to 30 pages for the multi-language report, compared for the, to that wonderful presentation regarding cell phones. When do our kids get that level of analysis, their needs, the supports necessary? You talk about a sense of belonging. Nowhere in here, when I was reading about your transition points, do you know how organic that is? That comes from the kids, and it has taken time. My kids are involved with, that's one of the kids they were talking about that's involved with band, and those kids accepted him and made him a part of their team, so he plays percussion with them. He's on a running club. I went there one day, because I coach running, and I said, "I don't need to be here, he's got his buddies he's running with." That's belonging. And then one of my kids gets invited to a birthday party for the first time in third grade. That's a sense of belonging. Is that part of your success indicators here, when you make this change? How long will it take when we get to Coron? How long will it take for our kids to adjust to that level of belonging? That takes time. That takes time. It's a tough time right now, you'll have to forgive us as parents. At the national level, we're hearing that autism is an epidemic. We're hearing it might have been something my kids ate, or a shot they had. So they have to forgive us if there's a little bit of defensiveness. So I thought, when I talked to Clint Hall last week, I taught, I thought, "Let's focus at the local level." He said, "You're right, Mike. What can we do at the local level?" And so I thought I could count on you to allow us to fo- focus on the local level, to follow the facts. And the facts are, if you're focusing on kids... And the facts are, if you're focusing on kids, and if you're prioritizing kids, let's not disrupt their education again. Allow them to grow at Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Alice Remling.
Hi, my name is Alice Remling, and I live in South Elgin. Imagine if for every single year of their elementary education, one of your kids was placed in a different school. Not just once or twice, we're talking three, four, or even five times. Year after year, they're introduced to a new building, they have to learn where the bathrooms are, who the principal is, who their support staff are. They have to start over with relationships across grade levels, as the backers just described. That's tough. Now, on top of that, for these students in the Access Program, that's all compounded by a disability that significantly, oh, shoot, I'm getting a phone call. Disability that significantly impacts how they handle changes to routines or environments. My son has a tough time if his teacher is gone for a single day. To completely upend an autistic child's educational experience year after year feels insurmountable. District Administration, if tonight you are recommending to ship these 12 students to Koran next year, I want to remind you of your why. Why did you go into education? Why are you in educational leadership? In your interviews and evaluations along the way, did you talk about how much you value students? How important it is to keep students at the forefront of the decision-making process? Are students still your why? If so, how can you reconcile that why and look those families in the eyes while you send them to yet another school? Board members, if admin comes to you tonight and says the only option is to move these families to Koran, please reject that recommendation and tell them they need to do better. I'm hopeful you make the right decision, but in the event that these kids are moved yet again, I have two suggestions. Number one, do not come at these families with reassurances that Koran is a great school. It absolutely is a great school, don't get me wrong. I love Koran, and I have no doubt that the staff there would welcome them with open arms. That's not the point. You could move these kids to the most luxury, nutreous school in the country, and it would still be a massive change that will take them 10 steps back in their growth. To pat them on the head and assure them it'll be fine is condescending and infuriating. Number two, own up to your mistakes. Acknowledge what these families have gone through for the past five years. Dare I say it, apologize. I know there are legal ramifications to owning up to mistakes you made, but this is such an egregious, obvious, terrible case of repeatedly hurting some of the most vulnerable children under your care. For this organization to deny its complicitness in that pattern is laughable. Please, do what's right here. Someone in a position of power, board and admin, that's you, needs to salvage the elementary education of these students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Diana Gonzalez.
I'm short. Good evening, my name is Diana Gonzalez, and I am a mother of my son Gabriel, who was attending Thompson Middle School. On the first day of school of this last year, I was thrilled to hear from him at lunchtime, to hear how his first afternoon of school went. I was concerned when I didn't hear from him. I later heard, 30 minutes later from the school, that he had been hurt through no fault of his own, that he was attacked by another student, that he was hit in the head, and that I should come pick him up. So I arrived at the school to see him sitting, covering his eyes. I come to learn that he was punched and kicked, and that was about all I was told. I was suggest, it was suggested that he be taken to the ER, so I did. On our way to the ER, he was again covering his eyes from clearly being troubled by the sunlight. He was very withdrawn, he was in a daze. At the ER, he was diagnosed with a brain injury, a broken hand, a bruised L4, which at one point they thought his back was broken, and whiplash. In the days preceding, my son suffered from twitching at night, being unable to sleep, of course, very afraid to return back to school. I didn't really know much more. One of my son's friends, a student who was at the lunch table, their parents were able to tell me what actually happened to my son through the children's eyes that witnessed this. What actually happened is that a student who's a known bully, who has had some issues, who was not assigned to the lunchroom that my son was assigned at and attacked in, he was able to leave his classroom, walk straight into the lunchroom without anybody stopping him. He whacked my son on the head with a laptop, then grabbed him by the neck and shoved him into the lunch table, punched him, grabbed him by the neck again, and threw him on the ground, continued to kick him. That is how he sustained all these injuries. I later learned that this student, while some are troubled, this student had a severe history of violence. He strangled a student the year prior. He had the school on lockdown, on a soft lockdown, twice. He threw a padlock at another student. I am told that staff, that everybody was afraid of him. And I ask for the district to really take a look at your policies and notifying the parents sooner, and just understanding what this all led to, to affect our lives, which other people will speak to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Jody Zicko.
Good evening, I'm Jody Zicko, I live in Camden Hills. I've been a resident of Camden Hills for 22 years. All three of my children attended D303, two graduated from Thompson Middle School. Like myself, most people in this community move here for the quality education that the public school offers them. Reading and math proficiency was in the top 5% at the time in the state. Readiness in the areas of those two items were consistently over 75%. Today, they're at 50%. Arts and athletics programs were well-refined, and they were award-winning. The district focused on educating the whole child, and as a testament, prepared my own children effectively for college. Today, each lead a very self-sufficient life, they're productive, and they're happy. In 2003, 22 years ago, the state report cards for the district focused on what mattered and made all of what I just mentioned above possible. Today, the 2024 report card is barely a reflection of what I mentioned above. While I'm grateful for the experience my children received coming to know Diana and her son over the last two years, I'm confident the same opportunity is not available to children attending here today. I met Diana and her son in October of '22. In September of '24, I learned about the attack at Thompson Middle School, and to say I was alarmed and disturbed was an understatement. Diana and I started walking for exercise about four weeks following the incident. As we walked, I learned more about the attack. Students from Thompson reflected on the perpetrator having created a list of student targets. Clearly, that day last August turned violent. Since I've watched the video, I can state confidently that he was struck on the head with a laptop. He was slammed on the ground, punched, repeatedly kicked. He was left with a concussion, broken bone, as Diana mentioned, and a bruised disc on his spine. But those were just the physical wounds you could see. The deeper damage came after. In the weeks that followed, I observed Diana's son had changed. I witnessed two separate but similar phone calls between Diana and her son while he was at school. On the occasion in late September of '24, he was calling her from school, hiding in the boys' lavatory. Hyperventilating and frightened, through tears, he kept repeating the same thing, "Please come get me, please come get me, please come get me." He was in a full-blown panic attack at 12 years old, alone, at school, and he was terrified. When a child is so traumatized that they show signs of PTSD, that is not normal, that is not acceptable, that is failure of policy, of leadership, and of basic human decency. Diana's son is still healing, he is tougher than any bully. But let me say this loud and clear, absolutely no child in America should have to recover from going to school. If we don't start standing up now for our kids and putting them first, then we are surrendering our school to absolute chaos, and that's not a future I am willing to accept for this community. This story isn't about a boy, it's about a system that is currently designed to fail our children. It's about kids who suffer in silence because schools have traversed so far off course, leaving our children undereducated, unsafe, and unprotected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Lori Van Heel.
Good evening, my name is Lori Van Heel, and I'm from the St. Charles community, and I am here to speak about equity and bullying. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here in support of Diana Gonzalez and her beautiful son, Gabe. I want to address a concern I believe many of us are witnessing, the unintended consequences of how equity policies are sometimes applied in our schools. While these policies are designed to ensure fairness and support all students, they can unintentionally protect students who engage in bullying, leaving others feeling unsafe, unheard, and unprotected. In the name of equity, schools may hesitate to discipline certain students, fearing that consequences might appear disproportionate. But equity should not mean immunity from accountability. True equity means being fair in both support and discipline, regardless of a student's background. In my run for school board, I've heard from parents and students who feel abandoned by these systems. In one case, I was approached by a mother at a local city council meeting, when she knew that we would be speaking that night. With a concern that her daughter was anxious about attending gym class because a student was allowed to roam freely due to mental health accommodations, was present in the girl's changing area in his boxers, and is boxers-only. That girl didn't feel protected, and she's not alone. This is not an attack on equity, it's a call to apply it with balance. When aggressive or harmful behavior is excused as the self-expression or advocacy, it sends the message that some students are above the rules. That is not equity. That's inequality under a different name. Restorative practices, which we heard about tonight, are a great tool when used responsibly, but they must include real consequences and follow-through. With that, bullying becomes unchecked, and trust in school leadership erodes, as it has here today. So what needs to change? We need to review and revise current policies to ensure that we are protecting victims, not just focus on reducing punitive actions. Schools must be empowered to act decisively and fairly, ensuring that safety and dignity are guaranteed for every student. This means clear boundaries, consistent accountability, and transparency in how restorative or disciplinary actions are handled, and in this case, maybe even a change in leadership. I urge this board, making policy adjustments now that center both equity and safety, not one at the expense of the other. Not one more child should suffer. Let's commit to a vision of equity that protects all students, holds every student, teacher, superintendent, and school board accountable, and restores the trust that families place in our schools. In addition, when we remove God from these institutions primarily education, no one wins. Psalm 127:3 reads, "Children are heritage from the Lord, an offspring, a reward from Him." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker for this portion of the agenda is Michelle Peterson.
Hi, my name is Michelle Peterson, I'm a friend of Diana's. I would like to address a deeply troubling exchange of text messages from one of the board members who was a candidate for the April 1st, 2025 election in the D303 school board. In these messages, this board member pressured the victim's mom to delete comments from a YouTube video documenting the attack. These comments included calls for accountability and the current board to resign. The board member's concern appeared focused not on the victim or the well-being of the victim's mom, but on their own campaign. They admitted they were running for school board and didn't want voters to see the public comments within the three weeks of the election. This kind of pressure, especially on a parent already coping with trauma, should be seen as intimidation or bullying. Silencing the victim's mom to protect a political image undermines transparency and integrity, especially from someone seeking public office. This board member also cited a nondisclosure agreement that they claimed prevented them from speaking about their own child's assault within the district. They said that they could not share the names of the boys involved. While NDAs carry legal weight, using one while pressuring another parent to take down content raises serious ethical questions. This is not how we protect children, this is not how we support families, and this is not how we lead. This board member's actions could be viewed as an attempt to interfere with public discourse and silence the community's First Amendment rights. The public has a right to speak, question, and demand accountability, especially when it involves student safety. To those who failed to protect this child and his mother, I leave you with this. Learn to do right, seek justice, defend the oppressed, take up the cause of the fatherless, plead the case of the widow, Isaiah 117. I will continue to pray for your hearts are softened and your eyes open to the truth of Jesus Christ. Redemption is possible, but it begins with repentance and willingness to stand for what is right. Because we have taken God out of the classroom, the courtroom, and the boardroom, we have lost our way. We've forgotten that the love of our fellow man must come first. The lie of separation of church and state has been used to silence truth and erode our moral foundation. The compass is broken, and the consequences are before us. Only one board member reached out, but even their message focused on removing the video, not the concern for the child. The only staff who communicated with the victim's mom were the dean and the counselor, and that lasted about two months. No one else from the district checked on this family after this brutal assault. Not one call was made out of empathy or basic human decency. The only outreach was to take down a video, not to protect the victim, the students, or the brave lunch lady who stepped in and showed compassion when no one else did. And the students noticed. Some commented on the video, saying online that they couldn't believe the staff didn't intervene. Others expressed how disturbed they were by the violence. These children are watching, they are hurting, and they are taking note. What the lunch lady did in leadership, and what you did was shameful. You should have stepped in. Because you have lost your moral compass, I am demanding the resignation of every board member who was seated last fall, and the immediate resignation of the superintendent. You have failed to lead, you have failed to protect. It's time for you to step down, let truth, justice, and real leadership take your place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That brings us to item six on the agenda, discussion of the Access Program location. Dr. Gordon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Lackner. I'd invite up a panel of individuals to come forward. Board community, thank you. As we move into this presentation, this is a continuation of the previous Access conversation we had a number of weeks ago. This moves to answer some of the board members' questions, provide different perspectives, and our recommendation within it. Again, our core values are belonging, perseverance, and achievement, together building pathways to excellence. Focus in our strategic priorities of effective collaboration, structural coherence, and a culture of dignity within those. Tonight, our purpose is to provide our board with a recommendation, outline a plan for a potential program move while addressing board questions that were raised at the previous meeting, and then long-term location viability for the Access Program. As mentioned, we As mentioned, we had engaged staff and families a number of weeks ago on March 19th, and collectively, as I said, at that meeting two weeks ago. Perspective was to remain and do a transition program from Anderson over time, allowing the students who are in Anderson to remain there, and then to slowly grow the Coron program over time. We absolutely heard that. However, we are making a recommendation to the Board of Education to move both access classrooms currently located at Anderson Elementary to Coron Elementary, starting for the 25-26 school year. Now, I'll hand it over to Karen Pratt and others to walk through the rationale for moving the classrooms from Anderson to Coron. Karen?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Really, our team, when thinking about our recommendation, reflecting on the feedback from prior, and engaging in conversations about our potential options for the access program for next year, really settled on these bullet points when thinking through the rationale. We recognize that another transition of our program is not ideal, and being involved with the transitions over the past few years, it has been difficult, and we have had to work really, really hard to make our new community what we need it to be for our students. When we think about another program move, we really want to ensure that the calendar school days that we have for students within the program are the best that they can possibly be. And so with that, our recommendation to move to Coron supports this vision of those school days being the best possible days for our students and our program that they can be. So within our space at Coron, we have many increased options for small group instructional spaces. We can increase that collaboration among our access teachers, as well as our general education counterparts. We have more flexibility and have a West Side location for the program, which is something that we currently do not have. And then we can focus this spring and summer on really supporting the best transition possible for our students. When we think about Anderson Elementary, moving our program supports several other district initiatives as well. It also provides additional OT and sensory space at Coron for our students, where at Anderson, those are combined and in a very small space. And we have limited space for speech and social work supports at Anderson as well. So our move to Coron would support the work of these professionals in supporting our students. We also have increased storage space, which supports as well, and it allows Anderson as an entire school community to really operate within the minimum space standards that have So for our access program for next school year, we would have two sections of our program at Mon Hall, two sections at Fox Ridge, and then three sections at Coron. That's reflective of moving our two current Anderson classrooms to Coron, and then inviting a kindergarten section of our access program into Coron as well. When we think about the additional program costs, in terms of salaries, we would look to add to our district staffing profile for speech and language, an additional speech and language assistant, and this would allow us to intentionally staff all of our buildings while accounting for the increase in staffing that would be needed at Coron. So a speech and language pathology assistant allows our district picture to have greater flexibility to best meet the needs of students at Coron. Because we're opening up an additional section as well, we would look to hire one additional paraprofessional to support the staffing pattern that already is at Anderson. So then, when we think intentionally through our transition to Coron, we have two broad sets of considerations that we would think about for all students, as well as individual students within our program. So the column on the left really outlines the supports that we can put in place for all of our students as we make the transition. And then for each student in the program, we would work intentionally with case managers and families to think through other supports that may be needed to best support our students. And for supporting our staff to transition, we would facilitate different activities to ensure that new staff working with our program and current staff transitioning would have what is needed to transition. These would be opportunities to visit and to collaborate, to have consistent and ongoing collaboration among our teachers and general educators, and starting this spring and into the summer with professional learning opportunities for classrooms. So for our professional learning for staff, for the last few years, we have worked with an organization called STAR Autism Support to provide professional learning for our teachers. And most recently, we brought in STAR to support a workshop for one day for our teachers, followed by three consecutive days of embedded coaching in the classrooms with our students present. So we were able to really bring in that authentic coaching opportunity to best support our educators. On this slide, we outline a plan for continuing that model into the summer and into next school year, which is really that one-day workshop out of the classroom to engage in some learning with our consultants, followed by embedded coaching support across our district locations. For the summer of 2025, because of the transition that we're going to be potentially engaging in, we would want that professional development to also support embedded classroom coaching and how we intentionally set up our classroom spaces to both support our teachers with the move, while providing them with information to set up the new classroom to the best extent possible. We would then continue this one-day workshop and coaching model into the school year. And this also gives us opportunities to weave in professional learning for both our early childhood educators who support students with autism, as well as our middle-school educators and down-the-line high school educators who could benefit from our workshop model as well. So STAR offers great flexibility to our district in terms of what we can provide our teachers and staff. And then, in the district, we would continue with embedded coaching and support based on the learning from our STAR workshop time through special education support coaches, our program facilitator, and others. For our professional learning for Coron staff, we would start this spring with an initial presentation. So now we're talking about all staff within the Coron environment, not just staff who work directly with our access program every single day. In the summer, we would then provide some learning on best practice strategies, and kind of two groups, we would kind of think of educators in two groups. One would be our general education teachers, who are supporting classroom instruction. Our other group would be our specials teachers, art, music, and PE, and STEM. So having kind of two different but parallel levels of learning, starting this spring and moving into next year. This would be kind of a blend of presentations, as well as opportunities for collaboration, starting with more collaboration at the start, and then fading into the spring as appropriate. Into year two, we would really work through a needs assessment process and getting the feedback and voice of our educators for what would both our teachers in our access program, as well as the Coron community, what would they really be looking for within continued professional learning? We could continue the kind of like workshop, followed by coaching model, or think about something else based on the feedback of our staff, really leaning on the flexibility of the STAR staff that we work with, and thinking about what our program continues to need. And likewise with the Coron staff, starting with the needs assessment and then delivering professional learning that is both focused on supporting our students, as well as the identified needs that the staff bring forward.
Laurel, you want to take us through the delivery models from the EC to 22+?
Yes, thank you. I will reiterate, as Karen had mentioned, that it's not that we think that this is ideal, but when we shared the presentation with you in March, and we heard the really thoughtful questions from the board members, we wanted to make sure and try to answer some of those questions through this next series of slides, and help you see how our continuum varies, because those questions came to us from EC, from the board members as we talk about and look at what we are recommending and how we can move forward. So in early childhood, we start, as you know, with one early childhood center. Therefore, all students come to that one center, and so that is considered the home school, even though they each have their home schools that they will transition to for kindergarten. This slide is to show you that while we work with our students in early childhood, to make sure that we blend our classes with students who have, some have those needs as students with disabilities, some are there because they're there under the Preschool for All grant, and we have our students who are our community's students who attend as their parents are choosing to enroll them in our preschool. And we blend students so they can all have appropriate role models, and they can learn together at developmentally appropriate stages. We do simultaneously, right away, in our early childhood program, have that opportunity for kids to attend in a more instructional environment. Fewer kids in that classroom, some of these students will be students who will or may be recommended by their IEP team to transition to our access program. Some, during their early childhood experience, will actually move right into that blended classroom. There's ebb and flow, literally throughout the school years, when their age is three through five. And then, some, as they move into kindergarten, will still have that opportunity to move to those lesser restrictive environments in general education. But it's always a system that we think about under IDEA for the whole district, and then we vary that at each level, and then it's individual student decisions that are made through the IEP team process with their parents. Then, when our students move into elementary, we look at that home school being that attendance area school, and each of our 11 elementary schools then are a part of this continuum of services for the system within the district, meaning we start at general education with supplementary aids, up to and including some students who attend school outside of the district, a small number in our programs that are through our Mid Valley or NIA Cooperative, and some students in private day placements. But many of our students, and what the district has really achieved to do with improving that system, continue to, who are on the autism spectrum, continue to receive their services through general education, or general education with specially-designed instruction right within that class, or through smaller pull-out classroom environments. And then at times, they're recommended for the access program, which is that instructional level class with specially-designed instruction, which is typically outside of their home school, unless their home school attendance area is one of the schools wherein we are housing those access programs. As our students move into middle school, and we have recently had the opportunity to really think about this specifically for our students who are receiving most of their instruction through the autism program, we have, as I'm telling you things you all know, two middle schools where our students are attending. So now that, of course, changes their home school area, but of course, the part that becomes really nuanced is, again, thinking about the system, which will have some of those instructional-level classrooms, meaning they might be a period of the day. That's why that's in that more reddish-brown color. A period of the day that is a part of the student's schedule, where they have an instructional level, or students who are all students receiving services through special education, or they might have much of their day, or more of their day, more than 50% or 60% of their day, in an instructional-level class, which is more what our access students are receiving. Again, systematically, we've designed this so that we're ready and we're prepared to meet all of those students' needs, but then those IEP teams come together, and they work through how a student can receive his or her instruction throughout the school day, including that social-emotional learning and the academic instruction, as much as possible with their typical peers in their home school, but at times, that also will be outside of the home school. Specifically for our students who are in access, right now, those classrooms are designed at Thompson Middle School to meet those needs for students who need that higher level of instructional support. So it, again, illustrates that there's a slight change when you get to middle school, but it's still that systems perspective with individual decisions that can be made for each of those children's unique needs. And honing in on high school, it is fortunate that we've been able to design over the years that our students can access those more instructionally-designed classrooms in both of our high schools, so they have that opportunity. At this point in time, we have not yet had our students move, matriculate to high school who are in our access classrooms. So that has been a part of our work in planning for our students as they move into their high school experience. So, again, you see that similar continuum with some distinguishing points. And then finally, as they move into the transition services, it's a unique opportunity for students whose IEP teams recommend that they continue in special education, they can continue up until they turn 22 through that school year, when they turn 22. And therefore, our students who are in the transition program, which is housed right here at Lincoln, are again pulled back into a center, similar to what that looks like in early childhood. However, where it says 100% special education, the unique thing that occurs in the transition services program is that our community in St. Charles becomes their more typical peers. So they are constantly, consistently, and regularly, depending, again, on each student's need, not only participating in those academic and socially-emotional appropriate standards, but they also are accessing community-based instruction and working at jobs, et cetera. So that's a part of our work with our community partners, once our students who are recommended reach that age. The one thing that I want to make sure and point out to you is, when we think about our design, and we think about designing really backwards, starting with our students who are going to be in transition programs, likely, again, we can never project that entirely, because that is an IEP team decision, but it is something that we plan for. And when we plan for that, we are very intentionally planning that many of our students who are on the autism spectrum will indeed, and do indeed, receive those transitional services through the time when they are 22, so that they are continuing on in their education with us in D-303.
All right, let's transition into this long-term location strategy for access program. Laurel, you want to kick us off?
So this is something that our team has already begun working on prior to these recent discussions at the board table, and as Karen pointed out, STAR has come this year as part of our professional learning for all of our teachers, as well as thinking about our greater school environments at that elementary level. It is actually a reboot in the sense that there but this was a time when we thought that we really needed to systematically come together last year in planning for this year, and make sure that we were building the best program instruction and support that we could, that would match both for those standards in general education, as well as for some students who might need essential standards outside of what the state standards are for general education, so that they also have that guaranteed and viable curriculum that we work on through our PLC process. All of our students deserve that, and that's what we've been working on. With this, we are proposing that we would step into a comprehensive committee to take this further, and to make sure that we have all of the voice at the table from our different stakeholders, to really look deeper at aligning not only those characteristics and those needs through STAR, or those supports that are designed through STAR, but also to identify any other curricular resources that would help us to make sure that we continue to improve the instruction and supports for our students who are on autism spectrum, or who have similar needs. With doing so, we are looking to continue to improve instruction for all of our students, and to really have that committee bring that voice together to make sure that we're thinking about the best instructional models, how schedules could maybe help us meet those needs better, and consider recommendations for space needs for EC through 12+, for all of our students, as we look in a long-term way forward. And in doing so, kind of two aspects there, one would be in our committee proposal, identifying those key components of evidence-based practices, and the other would be reviewing and recommending optimal models for instructional services for students on the autism spectrum, wanting to really make sure that some of the things that Karen was referring to and that we've identified and talked about, Jared talked about in our last meeting with regards to those space constraints in our buildings, to really think about our school buildings at that elementary level in particular, those differences that they have in their space, in the sizes of not only the classrooms, but the auxiliary spaces. in the sizes of not only the classrooms but the auxiliary spaces, often depending on when they were built and what was contemplated for student needs, so that we can really, quite frankly, do better with the information that we have now and think about our spaces very, very systematically to make sure we're providing those supports and services for not only now but for the long term.
And that is where I'll pick up with the long-term strategy piece, fully acknowledging that we want to be able to sustain the growth of the access program and give the students the learning opportunities that they deserve, and we know that we want to minimize, to the greatest extent possible, our need to relocate. We would love to be able to minimize the number of transitions that students have K through 5. So we're going to continue to evaluate the needs of our buildings and what, what we would like to see within our buildings to be able to feel confident and comfortable that we have looked at all the factors to minimize the likelihood that we would need to relocate K through 5. And so the first thing we're going to look at is, does a building footprint and their projected enrollment and their space plan have three core classrooms that would be available to have three access classrooms? With this being in the first year of Boundaries, we want to make sure that we are always monitoring the projections versus the actuals to see if there is any type of variation there. We know that with this programming, we want to provide excellent small group instruction, small group areas, auxiliary spaces, flexible spaces to meet students' needs. Having an OT, PT, and sensory space that is robust and outside the classroom to the greatest extent possible, so have its own dedicated space. And then we know that we are going to have additional roles with like social work, with speech language, and making sure that we have adequate confidential and shared office spaces for those therapists to, to do the work that they need to do. Other just potential considerations we would make if we were to ever get to a place with like a Munn Hall or a Fox Ridge where we could not meet those expectations is looking for schools that do obviously have those sufficient classroom spaces, the flexible auxiliary spaces, the size of the offices, not just the sheer number of offices, and then looking at, looking for buildings that don't qualify for Title I status or have a multilingual TBE program in them. We feel like Coron meets all of these standards, not just with the office space being over 4,000 square feet, four of their offices are over 400 square feet. This creates significant amounts of flexibility to meet students' needs with also having three dedicated classroom spaces for the access classrooms and the OT space and sensory space outside of the classroom.
From the information that was shared here this evening, it is why we're recommending that both of the access classrooms at Anderson be relocated to Coron Elementary starting in the 25, 26 school year. Board, any questions for myself or the team?
Okay, so, well, first off, I really appreciate kind of the even keel delivery here, but it's certainly a nuanced topic, and I can tell that you, you all care very deeply about these students and serving them to the best of our ability. I want to thank Mr. Jared for having me out to the program and showing me around the facility and giving me an opportunity to see some of the students and the teachers in action, and it's abundantly clear to me that they care very deeply as well. One of the things that I think is of primary importance here is that we get the space correct for these students, right, and something that can be a long-term solution for these students as well. We have heard a number of times from the community, both during public comment as well as through calls and emails, that, you know, moving these students around is particularly challenging, and for such a vulnerable student group, it's, it's heartbreaking to see that. So I appreciate the sensitive nature with which you're, you're doing your best to handle that. It is very clear to me. One of the questions I do have is that with the potential growth that Mr. Buxton has spoken to at great length in previous meetings and today as well, why are we saying that now is the best time to be making this choice, right? We have heard from some of the community, let's, let's hold off, can we hold off on this decision, is this something that we could do in a year's time or in two years' time? So if we could speak a little bit to why this timeframe, especially doing it earlier than was commented on previously, you know, doing it kind of in a last minute nature, what does this afford us, the opportunity to get done right, and why is now the best time to do this?
I'll start with my belief on this, and it really comes down to ensuring that each of our students, specifically speaking at Anderson Elementary, have the necessary physical structure and support structure to be able to access their learning, be it general education or within the multilingual program or within our access program. That's really what it comes down to. When we don't have space at Anderson for, for a dedicated area for swing, for other emotional support outside of being in the classroom, that's a, that's a challenging place for us. We want to make sure that each of our students have the adequate space necessary to achieve their goals that we, we hope for each of our kids. Other board members or other members?
I'd say another factor is with the growth of the program, we were going up to a seventh classroom. This current year, we have six access classrooms, so going up to a seventh classroom was not necessarily going to afford us the ability to put a third classroom in one of the three existing buildings.
If I can just ask a question, we've talked about this being a growing concern and so therefore a growing need, and we're growing, the program is growing. I know that we talked about Anderson and the potential even for build outs and things like that, and my underst- Coron has a footprint that should we have that kind of growth where we can actually expand if we need to on that property, and Anderson wouldn't even, even if we had the funds to build, wouldn't necessarily afford us, based upon just the footprint of that property, wouldn't necessarily afford us to, a way to put this program in and align classrooms in a, in a, in a way conducive to running this program. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
You are correct. Long-term viability at Anderson to build on at Anderson is less advantageous than it is at Coron. Coron has significant more ground space to build on to. Anderson is very landlocked between the, the road, the two roads and the forest behind it, so there's limited space to, to grow there. So that's why in the long-term strategy, as Mr. Buxton described, is that really trying to ensure that we're looking at buildings such as Coron that have, that are newer and that have more flexible space already built into them. Chris can speak to that, and that ability to, again, allow each of our students to have the necessary physical space to be able to do the work that they need to do, be it from a pullout classrooms or pushing in or adequate space for OT, PT, auxiliary services. And that's what you're missing there, but from a construction standpoint, Coron is a much better site to build on to.
And, and I, I bring that up because as, as painful it is, as it is to watch this transition again, and I used the word permanent last time, and I sometimes apparently I choose the wrong words. I used the word permanent last time, obviously I don't mean permanent, I mean as long-term as we, as permanent as we can make it. This is a population that, that, that's particularly troublesome for them, and I don't want, I don't want, I don't want future generations to, to have to endure what's going on right now or what's, what's happened over the last couple of years. I want them to find a more permanent home so that there's, that there's less burden for the, for the move for them in the future. I don't want them to be, to be settled with that in the future.
My, my question is, if we don't make the decision now to go to Coron, is there any child at Anderson's education that is not compromised access or bilingual or general education?
If we do not make the change now, what will happen is Anderson will have two fewer classrooms to use for, you know, we already know they're going up at least one section in general education, and they have a second grade level that's right there that we're continuing to watch. Anderson, because of their lack of auxiliary space, and Mr. Jared, by all means, jump in, because of their lack of their auxiliary space, they do need to identify a couple of classrooms where they put multiple certified educators in that core classroom area due to they don't have the office space to meet the minimum space standard, so they might put four or five certified staff in a classroom and try to use visual barriers, et cetera, to, to run the small groups and-
So we'll, we'll also have to go back to art on a cart, right? We'll have to, we'll, we'll have to make a number of compromises to make it work.
Yeah, you, you had a very, you know, great, great question, and to answer it, that, you know, the challenging space considerations that will, that would have to happen would negatively impact in some way all students. If access were to stay, it would impact access students for our new TBE students that we're, we're welcoming and want to have that program start off while we would impact them and our, and our full Anderson students. Sixty-two of them next year. It would, it would have some impact on, on their learning in, in, in different fashions, their ability to have the needed small group space to do tier three and enrichment, the ability to have the privacy for social groups settings that we need, you know, our AT class, we're proud of growing that, and we want to have the right space for them. The list can go on and on, and any one of these individual things sometimes can be, maybe solve this, maybe solve this, you know, but in, but, but as, as a school, it would have a considerable impact on, on all students in some way.
And I have, I know, no doubt that you would endeavor to solve and put the puzzle pieces together, like I've seen what you've done with the space that's there now and, and how you guys have made it work. You know, the, the word burden keeps getting thrown around. I'll say that it's very cynical to have taken that word originally and apply it to the students because that's not what it was intended for, it's not how it was set. The, the, the challenge is, is that your building is not, doesn't, doesn't have that space, and, you know, we, we can't compromise the, the space for every single person for this, because it will also compromise the space for the access students, because they'll be moving to one classroom in this. And we need that space, we need the space to have them have the, the proper, the proper tools. The other question that I'll have, I'll take it back to, we're talking about for the long-term strategy for, for training. So the STAR training, is that only for, like, one of the things that, you know, that I heard in touring was special, the special training for PE and other things, you know, access is a, a fraction of the students with IEPs in our district, right? We have an incredible number of students who do have accommodations or other things in the district. Is that, can you talk a little bit about that, how that impacts the rest of our staff?
Absolutely. So when we speak specifically about the STAR organization, they're really working to provide curricular resources, instructional routines, different strategies, and curriculum, and essentially a curriculum for our students who are on the autism spectrum. So that's why that training is specifically for our access staff who will be implementing a curriculum to really support the skill development of our students within the program that are really unique needs to the students in our program. Now, can some of those strategies or do some of those strategies and supports and routines and classroom setups greatly support all of our students? Yes, absolutely. Having the knowledge start within our access classrooms and then working through our coaching structures as well as collaboration among our PLCs really supports that learning to really grow within the full school community so that our general educators and specials teachers benefit from that as well. The general, our general education counterparts don't necessarily need that in-depth of knowledge, however, they can benefit from much of the knowledge and knowing how to best support students. So that's why within our professional learning plan, we want to kind of differentiate those roles, and then of course base it on feedback from the educators of what they're really looking for within their specific settings. PE would have to come through our staffing pattern and really thinking through specifically adapted PE and how we will support Coron next year with that. So that one's slightly different based on the needs.
All right, okay. I had one more, but it'll come to me.
Chris, would you mind speaking a little bit about Coron, the space itself, the work around that and why, just the flexibility that a newer building like Coron has versus an Anderson?
Being one of the, well, the newest building along with Norton Creek, I think that, you know, the vision of what education looks like was a bit different than those schools built in the 50s and 60s, and so within Coron, there's a lot of auxiliary space. So we have for, initially, the space was for every grade level, they had a, like a workroom, if you will, and it was a flexible space for small groups. Even since it opened in 2003, education looks a little bit different. We may have had one resource teacher when the building opened, we have three now, some buildings have four. And so that space has been, that workspace has been converted into spaces for our resource teachers to work, our ELL teachers to work. One of them is a sensory room, one of them is our OT, PT room, and so every little office space or resource space is being used for instruction in some way. Because we have multiple smaller offices, we currently have two social workrooms and our school psychologists in a smaller space for that confidentiality piece and would continue to be able to do that as well. Another benefit is our large space in the second and third grade wing that's just like, it's an open area. When I came to Coron, it had couches and books, and when COVID hit, we transformed it into space for our, for our paraprofessionals to work with students, and so they each have their own workspace set up. And then there's also flexible spacing just to pull a student and work with them, or sometimes students are out there working to finish something up, but it's an open space that can be used flexibly to support students for whatever the need might be. Obviously, spaces for each of our specials, a larger LRC that, that has some flexibility to it as well. So just, it, it just has, when thinking about Anderson or having come from Munn Hall, it just has a different structure to it that allows for that flexibility to support students in those smaller situations.
Thank you.
I think it's okay for me to talk. This has been a hard night. It's hard to be a board member on nights like this. I have to commend all the advocates because they are doing what they need to do. They're advocating for their kids, and that's their number one job. It's hard to be on this side of the table where we have to govern and we have to figure out the issues as they lay out in front of us. I had the pleasure to be able to go to access and meet in the classroom. The one thing I want to be sure everybody hears is that at no time have I heard anyone say the program is broken. Parents, kids, administrators are pleased and I think proud of what's going on with their kids. That's, that's commendable, that's something that we should be thinking. I, I go to Anderson every Thursday at 1:00, and it is a great culture. Kids love being there. Kids love being there, everybody feels welcome, and that is a plus that makes people want to stay. I also got to go to Coron, and Chris gave me a tour, and it is a, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it, it is amazing space. Is it the Ritz? No, but it was built differently. It has space, the idea that all three classrooms could be together, that the OT sensory room is right across the hallway, it really does give a community feeling. And I think you heard very well from the other board members, we're talking about facilities. We're not talking about the program, we're talking about facilities. The thing that really has struck me from the comments from parents and teachers is the notion of time, and that it takes kids longer. We sat through all last year, hearing from every angry parent that we were going to move their kid to another building, and those kids probably adjusted much easier than what we're looking at with kids who go to access. So my questions are more about that time piece, because I am going to vote yes to move the students, because, one, I don't think we can give the supports that are outlined in this recommendation if we keep the kids at Anderson. We don't have the space, we can't add more people, we need to have the space available. I believe we have two outstanding principals sitting here at the table. They care about kids, number one. They, I've heard, it isn't just me seeing it, I've heard it from other families, so I believe that that community feeling will be strong. But that time thing is really critical. So one of the questions I have, and I've been sitting, I'll be really frank with you and know what that means, I would like to apologize to the families. The problem is, it isn't that we intended to hurt anybody, we just don't have space in the right places, but moving kids as much as we've done is really hard. We shouldn't have done it, and I was an administrator here. He's taking my picture now. So I'm thinking behind, what could we have done earlier? We did try to stop moving the program around, and we couldn't, because we just didn't have the space. So I want to make sure that what we're looking at is going to be as long, like Mr. McNally said, as long-term as possible, so that we are successful with our kids. So I'm wondering, what difference did we have in the move last time? What are we doing differently now that will help the teachers, help the kids, help the families for that transition? Because we have some time before they go back to school, not a lot, but we do have time.
That's a really wonderful question, to think about how we can better support students this time, and it's also a tremendous opportunity to reflect on the work that we did to move the program to Anderson. It is amazing as well, just to hear the, oh, sure, it's amazing to hear just how everybody really loves and values the program, and moving to Anderson, we did some things really, really well, and there were some things that we definitely learned and that we could improve on for this time. Specifically, more, when we think about professional learning to support our students in the program, it's not something that you can learn, you know, from kind of like one presentation or that sort of, you know, just kind of like one staff meeting sort of delivery. So that's really where, in working closely with Nate, thinking about that ongoing coaching and collaboration, and how we build in not only the learning, but then opportunities for all of our educators to apply it across the school year, and being intentional about that is really important. So taking that professional learning and just really increasing it to best support everyone is one thing we've definitely learned. When we made the move to Anderson, I believe we had a parent and I just shared about the timeline last time, it was incredibly, incredibly short. And so thinking about essentially having a week, two weeks, to really get our students ready, didn't allow us to do all of the activities that we proposed on this slide. We did many of them, but having more weeks from now until the end of the school year will really allow us to be intentional for each and every student in our Anderson program to think about how we best support that transition. And that intentionality, again, is another learning from last time, just because of that short timeline. So the student transition, as well as professional learning, have been two big reflection points.
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to add, and I've already had lots of helpful conversations with some of the access staff at the district level, just about how do we make sure, as a staff and as a Coron community, that we are welcoming new students to our building from the access program, as well as from anywhere, right? And so there's already a plan for this Friday to do some learning that will be supportive, you know, obviously thinking through the spring, and what are the things we can do as far as welcoming families in, having parents come see the space. We want to get to know the students and make sure that when they walk in the door on that first day of school, that they know the Coron faces, or some of the Coron faces, and they have those safe adults. I think another piece is, we have done a lot of work over the past few years, you know, in regards to de-escalation, regulation, and co-regulation. We've had some challenges over the past few years, and we've used those opportunities to learn, so that we know that we're supporting each individual student and the way that meets their needs best, and that is work we will continue to do. And it's a staff that is focused on learning and focused on what is best for students, and I am confident that will continue to be that way, and will continue that learning over the summer and into the fall as well.
I wondered if there are things we should be considering resources for over the summer, families to come, get to walk around the building, teachers to meet, those kinds of things that you can do over the summer when it's not filled with lots of kids. So that would be one thing. The other thing, do the students from, my understanding is Coron students-- Did I hear you say the Tom--
Redlin.
They go to Redlin. Okay, then never mind, because I think it's going to be important that those connections, kids to kids, the idea that somebody got to go to a birthday party, and that's a pretty big deal, how we can make sure families are connected that way. So I, my hope is that, I actually agree with what happened with the cell phone. I would like to do with Special Ed, it would be the same depth, and I love that you've already started that. Again, it's, this is not an easy decision, and it's been weighing heavily, I think, on all of us, as we've looked at what's going on. I commend you for trying to problem-solve through it all and what you've had to figure out. I thank the parents for speaking for their kids and for thinking what's best for their kids, because that's what we all want, is what's best for the kids. Thank you.
Just one last, from my, I, unfortunately, I'm a teacher, fortunately, I'm a teacher, there's my choice of words against, fortunately, I'm a teacher, but that doesn't give me the ability to go and view the programs the way other board members sometimes are able to, but I do have a lot of connections with other teachers. One of the things that I kind of made some notes here, we talk about aspirational districts, and I've heard from others that for these kinds of programs, we are an aspirational district, that we're not the one that, we're the ones that others are looking to. And so from that, I have the confidence, I've always kind of said, whenever we talk about, should we do construction, should we, what should we do with, I'm always, my words have always been, I'd prefer to spend my money on people, not buildings. There's reason for that, and I think here, it's the people, not the buildings, and I understand that it certainly, change of environment is difficult for those students. But the people we have are the people that I've always had the confidence in, and so I'm hoping that we can do things for transition, to ease the transition for these students. And again, I'm going to say it, I want this to be as permanent as possible.
I think that concludes our discussion, so you know other questions, which brings us to item seven, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through 7Z?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz and Mr. McNally. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Marsan, can you please take the role?
Mr. Koushert?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes. The motion carries six-zero. That brings us to item eight, our action items for the evening. Can I have a motion that this school board adopt the resolution authorizing and directing the president and secretary to give to the selected nonlicensed employees written notice of this board's decision to honorably dismiss said personnel effective as of the end of the 24-25 school term?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz and Mr. McNally. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Marsan, can you please take the role?
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Koushert?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries six-zero. That brings us to item B. Can I have a motion to approve the relocation of access classrooms currently located at Anderson Elementary to Coron Elementary, beginning with the 25-26 school year?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz and Mr. McNally. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion I would like to say is just in the learning of, to Mr. McNally's point, that we want to make this as permanent as possible, that we just kind of look through the learning of where these decisions are leading us and where we have from them, so that we make this as permanent as possible and cause as least disruption to this population as possible. The efforts that they're going to put in place is what I think is going to be the most important, because I just want to not continue to disrupt this population the least amount of times as possible.
So you know other discussion? Ms. Marsan, can you please take the role?
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Koushert?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
No, the motion carries five-one. That brings us to item nine on the agenda for information. There are four items included in the packet that are for information only. They are the D-303 financial report, the Mid Valley financial report, Freedom of Information Act requests, and the district enrollment report. Bring us on to item 10 of the agenda. Do any board members have new business that they would like to introduce tonight?
Mr. Lackner, I was disturbed this evening to hear a member of the public comment that a board member was communicating with them, and I believe the words were bullying. You know, I think, I don't know this is an agenda item, but I think it's something that I'd ask board president to follow up on.
Can I first state that we might want to look into whether or not that's true at all? So I think this is not the forum for that, and I'm a little disappointed you would even bring it here.
Notes taken. I appreciate the referral to the board president. At the same time, the commentary about those public comments will take under advisement, and it is the public's right and responsibility to share their opinion at the microphone in the way that they see fit. It's the board's responsibility to hear those. This is not a forum for an adjudication of either those comments or accusations, as they might be, and while I appreciate the request for the follow-up and some follow-up discussion could be had amongst board members, there is no forum here for adjudicating public opinion in that way. So are there other new business items? Hearing none. That brings us to citizen comments at the end of the meeting, item 11. Looks like two, sorry, there's lots of scratch outs on the page, so there's two, yeah, there's two public comments. So Mr. Koushert, will you please read the preamble?
Sure thing. During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and the community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility towards others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special, and committee meetings are live-streamed and are available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. Personal information should be considered before making a statement that will be recorded and made public. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you, to help support our work for the district, and on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koushert. Our first speaker is Terry McCann-Maholsky.
Look, it's just my height. Hi, good evening. My name is Terry McCann-Maholsky, and I am a resident of St. Charles with two students in District 303. First, I want to make a general comment to the members of the board, and thank you all for your professionalism this evening, in light of a lot of very tough comments that came your way. I know it was very difficult to hear from a lot of parents this evening, who had a lot of very personal concerns and a lot of emotional ones. My comment this evening is about a letter on March 10th that parents within the special education community within D-03 sent to the superintendent and the board detailing our concerns within the district about our students who have special education needs, IEPs, or 504s. We sent this letter hoping for a response that would include dialogue about improving our students' experiences, as well as our own as parents within this district. Our students tend to have a rough time, as I think you've heard. We did receive a response from the superintendent that was essentially a copy-and-pasted form letter that said, "We hear you, we take your concerns seriously," but none of our concerns were addressed. And to this day, we have not had any of this information brought up at a board meeting, which is what's indicated in the board policies, that things like this would be brought up at a meeting. Additionally, we haven't had any sort of invitations to meetings to have our concerns addressed. None of the parents who signed this letter, or any of the other individuals who are in this community, we haven't been contacted to have any of our concerns addressed. So we look forward to hearing some of our concerns addressed at one of the future board meetings, and maybe having some invitations sent out to us, so that we can have some of this dialogue in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Alice Frommling.
Okay, one more quick thing. So now that that decision has been made, and I know the point was brought up several times about how the footprint on Coron is much bigger, and I understand that, I feel like the conversation about expanding Coron needs to happen more proactively and not reactively later down the road. I think, I remember from the conversations last year about the boundaries, that the projected-- I think, I remember from the conversations last year about the boundaries, that the projected capacity or enrollment was going to be in the nine, upper 90s at Coron? I don't remember exactly, but I know they have space now. I'm just saying, you found yourselves in a position like you were stuck, rock and hard place, totally. Don't let yourselves get there again, okay? Be proactive with expanding on Coron like many of you discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. That brings us to item 12 on the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn the April 14, 2025 school board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McNally and Mr. Lentz. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the role?
Mrs., Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Koushert?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the meeting is adjourned at 8:41 PM.